I'm going to call this meeting to order at 3:02. The purpose of this meeting today, it's a special board discussion session. Today is May 1st and the time is 3:00 PM. And we are in the Joe Idlette Teacher Education Center, or Joe Idlette Jr. Teacher Education Center. We have special guests with us today. We have Andrea Messina, who is the Executive Director with Florida School Board Association. And then we have Dr. Bill Vogel from, you are-
A consultant with the School Board Association, as well as the Floridian Association of Districts School Superintendents.
Okay. And then we have-
John Reichert with the FSBA, and also does some work for the Superintendent's Association as well.
We share really good consultants, as you can see.
So, so we're very happy to have you here today, and we appreciate you coming in on sort of short notice. So today, the Florida School Board Association is here to give us an overview of what type of services that they could provide us as a school board for the interim superintendent search. And at the end, I have allotted 30 minutes, so that we can discuss information that they present to us today. So they'll present from about 3:00 to 4:30, and then we'll wrap up our discussion at the end, and try to finalize, wrap our minds around the timeline and the process, and the direction that we want to go. But anyways, thank you, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Mrs. Messina.
Okay, thank you. You know, it's our pleasure, really, to be here today and to meet with you. And I know I said it sort of jokingly, but Dr. Vogel and Mr. Reichert, the reason they're on our superintendent search team is because they are two of the finest and most trustworthy professionals that I know. And they being integrally, integrally related with the Superintendents Association also helps. So they know what happens on the backside when someone comes in as a superintendent. They provide a lot of the support services through the Superintendents Association. But for me, and for our purposes, they work with me on helping finding the right fit for superintendents and school districts. The idea of an interim superintendent statutorily, I want to remind you, is no different than a superintendent. It just is a superintendent who is being brought on for a limited period of time. And typically, that limited period of time would either be very clearly delineated from the onset, or there would be something in the contract which might say no more than one year, or something like that. Or it might have some limited flexibility with some overlap, or something along those lines, not to exceed an additional 30 days, or something along those lines. But that's all for you all to decide. And talking to you today, in this workshop, I think the main focus, and the most important focus we can spend our time on today, is the interim superintendent. That's your most immediate need. Asking questions about the actual, what are we going to do for a full-time superintendent, now that you know that you're in that position, I think those are important questions. I just think that they're for a little bit down the road. If we can shore up the district right now with some leadership, that is, that's what I would see as your top priority. Now, we're here to answer any questions that you have on any topic related to superintendents and boards and relationships, and how do we find these people, and what do they do, and what function do they serve? All of those questions, we can answer at any time. Just so you know, the three of us, within the last six months, have worked with two other districts. They happened to hire somebody internally that was on their staff to be their interim superintendent, but they just assumed could not have. So we've worked with two districts with their interim superintendents, during which time, just so you know, Bill was in constant communication with the interim superintendents who were serving, to make sure that they had the support that they need from FADS, whatever that might be. John actually came in and did some studies and reorg, work with them, and that sort of stuff, because John's background, just so you know, is the HR. He was the HR Executive Director before he retired in Seminole County. And Bill's a former superintendent, among other things, along his resume. So I represent sort of the board perspective. Bill represents the superintendent perspective. John represents the HR perspective. And you've got an attorney at the end who's got the legal perspective. So ideally, between all of us, we can bring these pieces together to try to help you find the best person to serve your district in this immediate time. We know you have a start, we know you have a time when your current superintendent is going to be departing. So that would mean that your start date would either be on or before that date. So you're going to have to kind of look at the start date, and then back up from there. We have a limited amount of time here. The reason that that's important is because an interim, you called it a search, and we don't necessarily call it a search, because we're here to help you find an interim superintendent, but we wouldn't, we would not characterize it as a search, which would be an all-out effort, which is what you would normally have with a superintendent that you're expecting to commit to for a longer period of time. As I have mentioned to some of you when I've spoken with you, typically, the types of people who are either willing or interested in serving as an interim superintendent are people who have maybe retired, and have an ability to commit for a set length of time. Typically, they're people who have had very storied careers, who, with whom people are very familiar, so they're not unknown entities. That doesn't mean that somebody might not indicate a willingness, because they know you're looking for an interim superintendent, and send a resume. But typically, the people that we would work with, and the people that we know, and would talk to, and say, "Hey, are you interested? Here's the situation, here's what they need, is that something you think you could do?" Would typically be former superintendents, or deputy superintendents, or people of high-ranking experience in school districts that we know are available, they may or may not be willing at this time. The reason I say that is because they typically would not, they're not looking for employment. They're not out there seeking active, full-time employment. So, so they're not, they're not necessarily people that are going to spend a lot of time filling out applications and resumes, and going through three rounds of interviews, and answering written questions. That's, they want to help because they have passion for children, because they have passion for education, because they see that you have an opening, and they want to help try to contribute in some positive way, and that brings them some level of fulfillment. But to manage expectations, I just want to be clear, these are not people who are expecting to go through a full-on examination process. They're known entities, you can search them, Google them, call board members with whom they served, or districts that they have served under, and find out anything you want to know about them. Their lives are open books. They're not afraid of anything, they, they're used to being in the public, but we're under a time crunch here. And so, given that, I think we have to acknowledge and recognize, and talk about what the process is going to look like for you guys to, to find a few candidates, to see kind of what profile you're looking for in candidates, and to try to, within your current set board meeting schedule, find a way that we can get somebody voted on by the board, and onboard before your current superintendent transitions out. My goal would be, my desire would be, that five people, you five board members, could all agree that one person, whoever that person may be, is the right choice for this district at this time. And I recognize that everybody agreeing may not be, it might not be doable. But that would be what I think is best for your district, if it's any way possible. So that would be my challenge to you, is to find somebody that everyone could agree on. Given that, the, the profile of who that might be, I'm sure each of you would have a different opinion on what that might be. So it's going to be important for us to hear what it is that you're looking for, so that we can maybe target some people, reach out to some people that we know might fit that profile. We're going to want to discuss with you how you want resumes to be compiled. There's a number of ways that that can happen. They could come to our office, and then after, whatever the deadline is, if it's 5:00 on a Tuesday, then by Wednesday at 10:00 AM, all of you would receive copies of those resumes. Or you could send them to your attorney, or you could send them to Ms. Asplin, or you could, we could send them to Mr. Reichert. There's any number of ways we can do it. They could send to your chair, and the chair could copy you with them along the way. So we're going to need to get some agreement on how you want resumes to be accepted. I'd like for you, before we leave, to agree on how many you think you might want to interview. Typically, two, maybe three, and how you plan to get to those two or three, because, again, you're under a time crunch. We don't have a lot of time to review and review and review. And then, if you want people to come for resumes, for interviews, we're going to want to set a date now, so that when people submit their applications, they're going to already block off that day, so they know if you want me to come in for an interview. It could be that after the resumes, you don't even need an interview. Somehow, a resume comes to the top, and you go, "You know what? We all know this person, or we know of this person, because we've done the research on this person, I think that's who we need, let's just get them in here as soon as possible." That could happen, and then you don't even need an interview. But I'd like to have the date set, so that if it becomes necessary, everybody's already got it on their calendar, and so too do these people who might be willing to serve. Given that, that's my little overview. I wonder, Dr. Vogel, if you'd like to add anything, and you want to pull your mic closer, and then I'll see if Mr. Reichert would like to add anything.
The only thing I'd like to add is, in some situations, there is an obvious person within the organization, too. And so that would be some, you know, if there's someone in the organization, you know, that would be a place you might want to look first. If there isn't, depending on the circumstances, then we can help you find someone outside of the organization. The other thing I would add, I'd just like to echo what Andrea said, is, we are here, John and I and Andrea, we're here to support whoever you would bring in, and we're only a phone call away, you know, to help the interim person ensure that they have a successful experience here.
The only thing I was going to add was an interim issue, because that has been successful in some of the other districts that have kind of been faced with similar, you know, need to fill vacancies pretty quick. So that was, that was all I was going to bring up. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do think it is, for context purposes, you guys are short-staffed right now. I mean, you know that your leadership staff has some vacancies already, and you also know that you have some financial, your budget issues are coming, not issues, but the budget is coming down the pike, and you've got planning for school next year. So there are some things that you're going to task this person with doing, so it's important that you think about the, the types of goals you're going to want this person to be tasked with, as well as, you know, I do think, given the last few months, that it is going to be important for this school district to kind of shore some things up before you look for your permanent superintendent. That's just my opinion. We've been watching some of your meetings, and kind of following some things that are happening in your district. And our goal for you, whether you would choose us or anybody else, it's going to be up to you when that time comes, to find a superintendent. But you want to position your district in the best possible way when that time comes. And the way to do that is to move forward, and not lose any academic or financial momentum. I mean, you guys are a good, strong district, you have high academic achievement, you've got people in the schools who are working every day, committed to students, and the last thing we want is for any of that momentum to stumble. So we're happy to answer questions, too.
Comment on it, too. I like to commend the board. Since our workshop we did on the finance training, I know Tim Bargeron has been in the district on a few occasions, and I believe he's coming back. I work very closely with Tim, and he is really top-notch, and I talked to him the other day, and he's really committed to helping you finish up the budget process. And whoever you would bring in, he'll be available to help you and get, train that new person. And there are other, there are some other people in the finance field that are interested in the district, too, but they're waiting to see, they're fine with an interim superintendent, they're fine, they just want to see what's happening, you know, at this point. So I know that's a priority of the board, but I think the board's taken some really wise action by involving Tim.
Well, and while we're commending the board, I do really want to note that you're not the only district that has ever had to hire an interim superintendent, and you're not the only district that has ever had a short time period to do it in. So those things are not unique to your district. I want to give you some comfort there, and I also want to tell you that we recognize bringing us in, for some of you, was not the easiest decision to make. And so we really appreciate your willingness to, to reach out when you said, you know, "Here's an area of something I just don't have experience in, but you do, so can you help us?" And I appreciate you bringing us in here, and I hope that we'll earn your trust in this, in this effort.
Can I, can I go ahead and pass out? I have our, our May calendar.
Sure.
And maybe that could help us as we go through our conversation. I hope I have enough.
We can share up here.
And then, this is, this is kind of the interim superintendent timeline I had put together, but it seems like it's, it's pretty well spot-on with what you had said, Andrea. So, it looks like it did two copies, didn't it? So, if we could take, Andrea, this is your, your time, but I just thought, as you mentioned this, and I think it would be helpful for us to have the calendar actually in front of us.
No, no, I appreciate it. And when you say this is my time, my, my time is really your time, so I'm here-
Right.
-to kind of answer questions, and I know many of you have a number of questions. So if you, if, if we want to maybe start answering and asking, asking and answering questions, I think that can help everyone, so that we all understand everything that's out there and needs to be considered. The, Bill, those are the dates? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, these are, these are, got here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So do you want to maybe look through this timeline? Is that what you're saying? Or do you guys have some questions before we get to a timeline?
Um, so this is just my, my rough draft, of when I was putting some times together and trying to work backwards. So, like I said, these are flexible, but this was what I saw that, what we needed to do. But if you want to-
Sure.
-go through that.
Sure. Okay, so let's just start with, is everyone okay with one person or one location receiving the resumes, and then those resumes being distributed to all board members at the same time? Is there anyone who would be opposed to that?
No, I'd be comfortable with FSBA being the one to gather the resumes.
Is there anybody opposed to FSBA, like our office being the one to gather that? Anybody opposed to that?
Uh-uh.
Okay, that was easy.
And they just mentioned at the end, or as they come in, everybody gets them as they come in.
Okay, so that's the next question. Would you like them as they come in, or all at once? You have a preference?
I do, I would like them as they come in. It'll give me a chance-
I do. I would like them as they come in. It'll give me a chance to, you know, review it, mull over it. If we call them, you know, it'll give us a chance to have a conversation. But I would prefer to have it as they come in, okay?
I'm actually going to say exactly the opposite. I find that if I'm looking at things as they come in, it's more difficult to compare from one to the other. I also find that I may intentionally or inadvertently wind up giving preference to somebody, simply because I've seen them sooner, and I've had a longer time for it to sit with me. So, I personally would prefer perhaps not all at once, but perhaps in batches, depending, we don't have a lot of time.
I don't think you're going to get, I'm going to say fewer than six, fewer than five, probably?
I personally, from my experience doing other kinds of searches, would rather get those all at once, and be able to create some kind of spreadsheet on characteristics that we determine, and use that as a starting place, to be able to look across at different charact, at different criteria and characteristics, to see who might emerge to the top based on that. It would be, for me personally, easier to see them all at once.
Anybody else have opinions?
Yeah, I've done quite a few hirings in my past, and I'd rather get them as they come in. And the reason why, I agree with you, that I don't look at the characteristics until I have them all together, but I do like to Google people. And so, I will do background checks and Google people. As they come in, it gives me more time to be able to do that. And then, when I have that information kind of cleared in my head about, you know, being confident in what they brought to the table, is their resume is true, then putting them all out together and looking at the characteristics that we come up with.
My personal opinion would be that I would agree with Dr. Schiff. But I don't believe that it's going to affect the process one way or another. Again, I think we're talking about five or less in a short period of time, so it's not going to, either way is going to work for me. But if we were working with a larger search, I would be more comfortable working with the way that Dr. Schiff is discussing.
Do you have a preference?
I'm open either way. I agree. If we, if we're only looking at five or six, then, you know, that, that would give us more time to actually research each individual. I like the idea of batches, but I don't, but we've, again, we don't have the time. I don't think that we could say every Thursday and Friday, send us what you have. I don't think we have that time, but maybe when we're looking at the superintendent search, maybe go about it in that way. So, I'm open.
Okay, so I heard two people who strongly wanted the resumes as they came in. One person who disagreed, but could live with it. Somebody who could live with it, and one who was opposed. So, are, everyone's okay if we send them as we receive them?
I can live with it. I'm used to getting, you know, 20 or 40.
All right. So, what we'll do is, we'll send them as we receive them. That doesn't mean within the neck, within that five minutes, because if they, for example, come into my office, and I'm driving, I don't even know they're there, and if it's a six-hour ride, as soon as I see them, you'll see them. Let's put it that way. I'll forward them immediately. And then, the question then becomes, shall I send them to your school board emails, or do you have, do you want me to just send them to Nancy and have her send them?
I would just prefer that you send it to our personal emails.
Okay, your school board emails. Yeah.
That's okay.
I will copy your attorney. I will copy your Nancy. And so, that will be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven emails, all at once.
Can I just, and I don't, I don't have an answer to this. I'm raising it as a question because we're under so many different kinds of restrictions. On many things, when they come through Nancy, what we know is they've all gone through the same process, and we've all gotten them at the same time, in the same way. I'm wondering if you have an opinion, or anybody, if, if, either processually, if that's a word, or legally, if that makes any difference or makes any sense. I like the idea, we all get everything at the same time, in the same way. But again, if people prefer it a different way, I'm open to it, but I'm, I'm more comfortable with knowing that there was a central repository, and it all went out at the same time, in the same way.
I'll ask your attorney if she has an opinion on that, since you asked about the legality of it.
From a legal perspective, there is no difference, whether it comes from Ms. Messina and the FSBA offices, or if it comes from Nancy Asplin to the school district offices. It makes no difference. It's from a legal perspective. This is a local preference issue.
May I, I'm sorry. We've had some issues with reply all. And so, it would be more comfortable for me to have everything go through Nancy, because if there was a, if there was a question about who was being replied to, it wouldn't be you. And just to be clear about any sunshine, it adds an extra layer of separation between board members talking to you versus board members talking through the school board attorney. So, that would be, I agree with Dr. Schiff, that it comes through one place, and then goes out to board members. And then, if board members have a question for you regarding one of the resumes, they would have to go through that extra step of then reaching back out to you other, in a new email, or picking up the phone.
I would also add that I have been having some trouble with email, where things, even from emails I get a lot, wind up in my junk file, and I don't know, I don't know that they're there until somebody says, "Did you get my email?" I know I get Nancy's emails. I know I won't overlook it, and I would be nervous. Because my email sometimes randomly decides when it wants to give me the email, and it doesn't, and I need to sort that out. But I don't really want to risk that that could happen with any of us who might not get a communication from you.
Just to be clear, I also have the same, where one email from one person will come through, and the next email from them goes...
And the next one doesn't, and I don't know why. So, I just want you to, you're not...
Would anybody be opposed to me sending them directly to Nancy, and then Nancy distributing them to the board? Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead. Nancy, that's going to put us in direct communication.
We're comfortable with that, too. That's really a preferred way. I like to do it, because then, like you were saying, they're logged in, you know when they're received. Because as soon as they hit our desk, they're actually public record, because, you know, we work with you all. So, then you've got a tracking system. So, that's, that'll work out well.
Okay. Then the next question...
Messina, I just want to make sure, but we are, you are still, are you going to copy the attorney, or is Nancy? Nancy?
I'll have Nancy do that.
Okay.
I'll go directly to Nancy, and then Nancy will distribute to all of you.
Okay, great.
That way, it's in her thing. So, then we have the question of the last date to receive resumes. Today is Wednesday, May 1st. I have every reason to believe there would be some people who are interested, who are probably either watching this, or will watch it sometime within the next 24 hours. So, we could start immediately, and there may already be some emails in my inbox already. But how long do you want to allow the, well, let's go back from that. Before we decide how long do you want to allow the resumes to come in, let's look at, if you had to do interviews, you would want the resumes in your hand and be able to review them, and you'd want to talk as a board before you decide who you're interviewing. So, we're going to need to have a date for interviews, which precedes a meeting date, when you would actually vote on who you're hiring, because unless you, I mean, you could advertise it as a decision meeting, if you wanted to have it as a meeting, or you could advertise it as a work session, however you decide, depending on what that is. But you're going to need a opportunity to vote on the person, which would then, in all likelihood, give your attorney and/or chair, however you want to do it, some authority to negotiate a contract with the person. So, we need a voting meeting, and then we need interviews before that. And then, we need you guys to talk even before the interviews to decide who you're going to interview. And then, we need a deadline backed up from there. So, looking at the calendar, do you have any board meetings already scheduled? I see a discussion, oh, business meeting. Okay, so you have a business meeting on the 14th, business meeting on the 28th.
We have a discussion session on the 14th, before the business meeting, that normally takes place at 12:00. And then, we have the workshop on the 28th that takes place at 1:00. So, that's a, generally, we have meetings from 1:00 until on two, two days a month.
Okay. So, if you already have the discussion session, which would start at 1:00 on the 14th, would there be the ability to start earlier on the 14th, for purposes of reviewing the resumes to decide who to interview?
I would imagine this could take the place of the discussion session, too.
Oh, I don't know what else is on the agenda. Okay.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Based on, I, this is actually the, the last, Dr. Rendell has asked to present a couple items that he would typically review with us on the 28th. So, he does have two items that he felt was time pressing to, to have at the discussion session. So, he is going to be taking half of that, that time. That does start at 12, and it, and that timeframe is 12 to 4. So, what we could do is possibly have a special morning meeting just for interviews. Or, or not interviews, but what we need to discuss.
Well, it actually might make sense to have interviews, because you have a business meeting that night, and then you could vote, you could come to some conclusion. But then, we'd have to do the interviews, maybe the 13th or the 10th.
Okay.
The Monday or the Friday. I don't know if anybody has, I'm good with that.
Hey, I was at you. And if we, if we close applications on the 8th, just post it for a week?
Depends on when the interviews, if the interviews would be the 13th, I'd go to the 10th.
The 13th is fine.
Okay.
13th in the afternoon's a problem for me.
The afternoon's a problem, but is the morning okay?
It's better than the afternoon.
Is the evening?
No.
Okay, no, no, I just, I'm just trying to help, work it out. That's fine, that's fine. So, is the morning of the 13th available for discussion to determine who might be called for an interview?
Yes.
Anybody opposed to that? And you can make it work, you said.
Yeah, or the 10th. The 10th is better for me, but nobody mentioned the 10th.
The 10th would be next Friday.
I'm good with either one.
Thank you.
The 10th would give you a little bit more time.
To do what?
Well, first of all, if the application's closed before the 10th, and the 10th, then you bring people in to interview, then there'd be time for discussion. A little bit more time, is what I'm thinking.
This, this presumes that anybody we would want to interview would have to be, would have to know and be available on the 13th.
We would put that in their advertisement.
So, I'm a little concerned that if we limit that to one day, and there's a candidate we really like who has a pre-existing commitment on the 13th, that we may inadvertently rule somebody out who we might want. So...
Well, I would strongly recommend that, given the short timeframe, that you would allow for a Skype interview if necessary, or some other accommodation. We would certainly make it clear that, we would hope that whoever applies could be available for an interview on that date. By having the Friday be the discussion session, then, that would give them time to make some plans, if they needed to, for sure. I hear what you're saying, but also, given your timeframe, you're pretty tight.
And when we put that in the advertisement, when, when they need to be available, we haven't had a problem with that, John, I don't believe. And they'll know upfront when they need to be available. But I agree, the 10th would be better for that.
So, to clarify, and then ask a question. What I hear you saying is, if resumes come in the 8th, we review them to the 10th. On the 10th, we have a conversation about who we want to interview. On the 13th, people come in for interviews. We have a discussion on the 14th. Would that item, then, do you anticipate be added to the business meeting of the 14th for approval, so that somebody is then approved by that date, so they can start the following week?
Partially true. The one thing that I was not necessarily committed to, although you bring up a good point, was interviews on two different days. I'm thinking you're going to maybe interview two people, three at the most?
I didn't say that. No, no, no. I said, I said a discussion on the 10th, for us to see who we want to interview, who would then come in on the 13th.
Okay, yes.
We would then have our discussion on the 14th.
Correct.
And, and maybe on the 13th as well, following those interviews. We haven't talked about that yet. But is the idea, then, that we would approve whomever that is by the 14th, so they're ready to start by Mrs. Zork's timeline on the 21st, giving them a little bit of overlap with the current superintendent?
Yes, and that would also, by having the vote on the business meeting of the 14th, voting on them, and unless you can negotiate a contract pretty quickly, you're going to have to give some authority to your attorney, and there's going to have to be some time where you vote on that contract.
Correct. You, you need to have approved an employment contract before the individual actually starts working.
So, we will need to call a special meeting, the 15th, 16th, or 17th, then, presumably? Is that... I'm trying to understand the process.
Correct.
It could happen that way, but it could also happen such that on the 14th, in the morning, you schedule a, a business meeting to vote on who to negotiate with. And then, we have some sort of a contract, sort of...
Tentative.
Hopefully, identified, that you could then approve the contract at the business meeting later that night. Is that something that would be doable?
Absolutely.
All it takes is time and effort, yeah.
We would have, we have some samples of interim contracts, and we could work with Mrs. DiGresta, and provide those upfront, ahead of time, even some to the board, so they can get an idea. And I don't expect we'll have an issue with that. The big issue will be salary, and sometime before we leave here, I'd recommend talking about what we pay.
For sure.
Can I get some clarification on this? So, if we, we approved the person on the 14th, had Mrs. DiAgresta enter into contract negotiations and finalize the contract, that's, that's a date I didn't have on my timeline.
We're saying that potentially, you could do the first part of the conversation earlier in the day, then have your discussion meeting, and then at the meeting, we would hope that a contract could be approved at the meeting.
Okay.
So, it'd be a meeting, a discussion session, a meeting. It could work that way.
Clarification. Is there such a thing? I don't know that this exists. So, this is my naivety. If we find somebody that we like, and there is any holdup in negotiating the contract, is it possible to approve someone pending the resolution of a contract, if it takes another 24 to 48 hours to do that?
Oh, absolutely. The board can make a decision, and typically, that's what you do in a superintendent search, whether it's interim or not, is you make a decision on the person. Then, there's a period for negotiating an employment agreement, and that employment agreement is then brought back. Sometimes, it's very quick, and sometimes, it takes a little bit to work out some details. So, it just, it depends upon your circumstances. But yes, you can decide on the person, now go negotiate and come back, you know, in 10 hours, or come back in 24 hours, or, you know, whatever it is with the document.
And then, we would have a special meeting to approve the contract, correct?
If it wasn't able to be done on the 14th, where, when you have a meeting, then yes, we would need to put another meeting on the schedule.
I think we would have to do that the 16th to the 17th, allow for the timeline.
Wait.
Mrs. DiGresta, okay.
I have two...
I have a question. So, by statute, we have to have somebody in place on the 24th? Or we have to have somebody named on the 24th?
You have to have a superintendent, I wasn't your attorney.
The document that we received from Dr. Rendell said that he was retiring effective May 24th. And so, his contract of employment would run through 11:59, 59 p.m. on the 24th. You need to have a superintendent in place, starting on May 25th, at 12:00 midnight.
Which means that we have to have a contract signed and agreed on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to make that known, because that matters for what we're doing.
And as I understand it, Mrs. Zork, you suggested that the superintendent start on the 21st, so that we've got a little bit of overlap for the interim superintendent to, if necessary, meet with, confer with, get whatever is necessary from current staff and the current superintendent, so that it's not starting completely afresh without, is that my understanding of why you put that date?
That were, that was my thoughts. Is that typical?
Um, it's happened before.
Yeah. I think that's good. But one thing you're doing is, the start date can always have a little flexibility in it, because like Mrs. DiGresta said, you have that whole week. And so, normally, you know, someone has a commitment on that day, they might not be able to start. You have that flexibility. Or if the contract, this discussion runs over, you still have the time to have a special meeting to get that done. So, I think the goal is good to set that up as a goal, on the 21st.
One of my thoughts with that was, if we have an interim that is with us at the start of the new school year, our last day for the students is on the 24th. So, that person would have a couple of days to go out and actually see the operations of the district in action before, before the summer.
I think that's excellent, to do that. That would really be helpful. I know Dr. Rendell would, you know, certainly be accommodating and help with the transition.
Ms. Rosario, you had a question?
I had a thought. If we were having our preliminary discussions on the 10th, interviews on the 13th, why wouldn't it be possible to take a quick break after the interviews, and then reconvene for a special discussion right after the interviews?
You absolutely could do that.
To eliminate the morning 14th special discussion session, at which time, Mrs. DiAgresta could have a little bit more, you know, freed-up time to enter into negotiations. If we did not have enough time on the 13th... If we did not have enough time on the thirteenth to complete our discussions, then we can go back to square one and reconvene in the morning session. Finish up our thoughts, I guess, you know, iron out whatever we wanted to iron out, but could we not do that?
You absolutely could, and that's exactly the format that we, that I have used in Duval County. They had two interims that they were interviewing. They brought, they, they were sitting at the dais. They, um, actually, I facilitated the meeting for them, so that everyone had equal time for the interviews. The first candidate came in, they had an hour, each, each board member, I think, had five minutes to ask whatever questions they were going to ask. At the end, there was a final round of, you know, one minute each, and, um, that candidate, they said, "Thank you", candidate left, next candidate came in, same thing, five minutes per board member, another final round at the end, that candidate left, and then the board had the conversation and decided who they wanted to offer the contract to. They gave the authority to negotiate to the chairman and to the attorney, but they had advertised it as a decision-making meeting, it wasn't just a discussion meeting, but that's absolutely doable.
Okay. Are, are the board members okay with that?
The only thing is, remember, we're locked in on the morning, so can you tell us the timeframe that you have on the thirteenth? Weren't you the one that needed it in the morning?
Right, did the tenth not work for somebody?
No, we're, we're open both.
Okay, because I'm also thinking of contract, that's why I asked about having a date, because I'm also thinking of what it takes to drop a contract and negotiate a contract. So, if we did the tenth, um, and hear me out for this, if we interviewed in the morning, and then we had a discussion in the afternoon, um, and maybe make that a decision-making discussion, I'm not sure, and we came up with a, maybe a finalist, or maybe two finalists, or whatever, if we had to meet on the thirteenth or the fourteenth, we could. But if we did it on the tenth, that would allow her another day to be able to get a contract written up for the fourteenth, because if we do it on the thirteenth, we're asking her to write a contract in one day. So, I just feel like if we did it on the tenth, she'd get more time. To me, the tenth is a better day, that's why I'm kind of advocating for that as well.
Um, Mrs. Zork, may I?
I, I don't have any problem meeting on the tenth, but we will have to take a break midday. Our exceptional students at Sebastian River High School have a performance and inclusion show, and I've developed a lovely relationship with those students, and I would hate to let them down. Um, I believe it starts at twelve o'clock at Sebastian River High School, and that's a commitment that I intend to hold true.
So, acknowledging that, how, how, so, i- in order to start planning sometime, in your experience, how long is each candidate interviewed for?
Hour.
An hour. So, let's say we have, at most, three to four candidates, at most.
I would be shocked if you had four.
Yeah, me too, but, but there are, there are local people, there's outside people, I don't know who's approached you, I, you know, like, any of that. If we met in the morning of the tenth, took a break, and then came back and had our discussion in the afternoon, what that also allows for is a little time for us to step back for a second, let things percolate, let us think about them, and then come back, which might actually not be a bad structure, because I agree with you, Mrs. Baranborg, that doing that on the tenth then allows a little bit more time for contract negotiation. It also, if for any reason there's any glitch in the process, it allows us a little bit of time for that. In the interview process, I, I just heard you say that, that sometimes with other counties, you facilitated the interviews, you've acted as kind of the emcee.
Mostly, it's timekeeper.
Timekeeper, but, but, so what I'm hearing in that is, are you generally here with us during those interviews? Or is that something we request? And, while of course, we make this decision ourselves as a board, if we wanted any thoughts or reflections from you, is that something that you do?
So, we'll start with the first question. If the board wants someone to facilitate, it could either be me, it could be Bill, it could be John, it doesn't have to be me, but we're willing to support that effort. The second question was, if you had any, if you...
Well, we will obviously be making the decision ourselves as a board. We've also acknowledged, in previous board meetings, that, that three of us have been here for barely, you know, for five months, two of us have been here for two years, this is a new process to all of us. So, while we, of course, are responsible for making the final decision, and we, that is, that's our job as, as government leaders in this process, um, I want to understand, I, your role also as somebody who will be bringing us candidates, who, if we request, will be facilitating that day of interviews, and then, do you just leave and say, "That's it, thanks very much"? Or, if we request, you stay through any of that discussion, is that something you do?
Okay, so typically...
You being the collective.
Right, the collective you.
Yeah.
Typically, when we present resumes, we will have gone through those resumes as a team ourselves, and identified, here are the, here's the area where they have strengths, here's a piece you need to know, this person has, um, um, I was giving an example to somebody recently, that if you were to have Googled, I'm going to say John, even though it's not necessarily true, but if you were to Google John, maybe it shows something with the union, right? That, that there was some contentious negotiation, and then, the, the context of that is that, you know, he inherited a district that didn't give, that, that gave, um, employees their health insurance for eight years, and always took the increase in, in premium, and at one point, they had to pass on that increase in premium. So, that's, when you read about that contention with the union, just understand this context. So, we would typically say, here are the strengths, and here are some of the landscape information pieces that you need to be aware of, so that you understand some of what you're going to read. Everyone is going to have good stuff about them, everyone is going to have some challenges about them, especially with bloggers, you know how that goes, uh, you just cannot believe everything that you read, and many of it's taken out of context. So, we try to give context under those circumstances. Then, we certainly are available to answer questions, but it, it is your discussion to have.
That answered my, what I was meaning towards.
And if you, as you receive the applications, we're available, but you can call us too, if you have any questions on, uh, due, because we'll do some preliminary checks too, because anybody that comes forward, we want to give you as much background as we have.
Mrs. Justice has a question.
Thank you. Where in this process do we decide who to actually interview? You know, Mickey Mouse could apply, and perhaps we don't want to interview Mickey Mouse, and, and so, we have a limited amount of time to do interviews. At what point are we deciding, as a board, who will be considered?
Well, that's what I originally had on the tenth, with the thirteenth for the interview. But then, when Ms. Baranborg said to interview on the tenth, my exact question is, when are you going to have that conversation?
Right, so that's my question, where, where will that be?
And, and recognizing that if you, if you want to do interviews on the tenth...
Then discussions would have to be on the ninth.
Well, but, think about people who've applied, you know, they need a little bit of time to make a hotel reservation, if they're coming from out of town, so we'll need a little bit of, that's why the, the discussion of who to interview on the tenth made sense, they had a weekend to make some plans and show up on Monday. But I do understand her point about the time, I, I do understand that. What is your experience with interim contracts typically are much less contentious?
I, I'm not really worried about the contract, I think, if we talk a little bit about salary before we leave, I think we'll be fine on that, but I, I really think that thirteenth is, the thirteenth is, is, gives a little bit more time. I'm just a little bit concerned about that same day.
We'd have to discuss who we want to narrow down.
On the tenth, right.
In other words, we can't just say, okay, whoever, we give you our top three, and whatever our top three are matching. We'd have to have that discussion.
Yes.
You guys would have to, I, I would, our experience in working with boards, because your top three might not be at all the same as her top three, and so, you all need to discuss who you're going to interview, and it may be two, it may be three, it might only even be one that you think you want to spend some time with.
So, can we agree to do, to have the discussion either in the morning or the afternoon of the tenth? Holding sacred, please, twelve to one-thirty, I would imagine, or eleven-thirty to one-thirty, so that we can, anyone who wants to attend the SE show can go there and, and be respectful of that. Can we make the decision to have the discussion that day, and then the morning of the thirteenth do interviews?
I'm good, whatever, whatever day you, you all, what's good for Terry.
If we're going to pick either one.
The afternoon of the tenth.
Morning would be better for me that day.
The morning's better, I mean, I don't, I'm fine that way, but...
If that's okay with you guys, we can have a discussion in the morning, and then, that way I can go back to work, because I teach in the afternoon, when I teach.
The inclusion show starts at twelve-thirty at Sebastian River High School.
So, are we starting at nine-thirty, or ten? I'm an eight o'clocker.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with that every time.
I'm up at five, so, anytime you want after that, it's fine with me.
So, what, nine to eleven-thirty? That's fine, on the tenth.
And that's the meeting where the board meets to decide who to interview?
Yes, sir.
And, and we can, we don't have to go till eleven-thirty, but, just in case.
Correct, that sounds good. So, applications close, uh, May eighth, um, they'll go to FSBA, the board meets, uh, from nine to eleven-thirty on May tenth, and then the thirteenth, in the morning, they have interviews. The morning, our board interviews, and then later that day, the board decides on who to offer the contract to.
Can...
I have a conflict in the afternoon.
Okay.
On the thirteenth.
Well, it's back to the morning, you have to be at your school by what time?
I'm not at my school until late.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, eight forty-five is when my school starts, so, that's why I said earlier is better for me.
So, on the thirteenth for interviews, if we were going to do two interviews, each one an hour, and then give you an hour for conversation after, which means we would need a three-hour window on the thirteenth, I think, Ms. Baranborg, you're the one who asked us to do that in the morning, is that correct? Was that that day, or do, am I confused?
That afternoon, my daughter's going to find out what my grandbaby's going to be.
You have to participate in that.
Sorry.
No, that's perfect.
And that's an ultrasound, so I can't reschedule that.
No, but what time, what time do you need to be out of the building, is the question?
Um, probably three-thirty.
Oh.
That's plenty.
We're good.
That's, that's not a problem.
Well, we've had some long discussions.
Would you guys be comfortable with the first interview at nine AM to ten? The second interview, ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, break for lunch, come back, you could either, you could either have a working lunch, or you could break for lunch, come back at one to two-thirty for the discussion of who you would want to direct your, um, attorney to, to negotiate with? Does that timeframe work?
What time do you have to leave, um, Terry?
Eleven, three-thirty.
Three-thirty. By three-thirty?
That takes care.
Yeah.
Three, okay, nine to ten, two people.
Nine to ten.
I think.
I mean, I feel like lunch, I feel like eating lunch is the last thing we need to worry about right now, so I don't work right, I mean...
Yeah, I have no problem going earlier.
You want to start earlier?
If that's okay with everybody, I don't, I'm saying three-thirty, but I'm guessing.
Let's, what if we start at eight?
If we have three.
If we have three.
Oh, if we have three.
It's fine.
Okay.
So, look, may, let's...
Well, these are, um...
Have three, you're saying, in case we have three interviews?
These are televised interviews?
Say that again?
Are we, we're recording the interviews, or are they not recorded?
Audio, I mean, you have to do audio.
That's up to you guys. That's a local decision, Mrs. Zork. Um, you, you, the board adopted a resolution a long time ago, that, uh, business meetings are live-streamed. So, if it's a business, if you're, if we're doing it as a business meeting, if we take action, they're live-streamed.
But it's a discussion, right, because we're interviewing?
It, it can be, um, the meeting can be noticed either as a discussion session or as a business meeting, it's up to the board.
Okay.
If you want to be able to take action quickly, you, a business meeting.
I have to defer to your attorney on that.
Okay. So, can we, can the, the, all of the interviews be during discussion session? And then, the one o'clock until three o'clock be business meeting? In case we need to take action on anything?
Yeah, you, you do need to take action.
So, the first half will be discussion, and then, the very last, you know, where we're going to decide on who we want to actually hire and give the job to, would be, that part would be a special discuss, a special business meeting? Does that make sense, did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
Business meetings have to be in the evening?
No.
No, ma'am. The only meeting that must be in the meeting is your, evening is your public hearing with regard to adoption of a budget, must occur after five o'clock.
And by making these decisions today, you have more than seven days' notice that you can give, so, it, it'll be fine.
Andrea, the, the, on the first, um, tentative schedule that you gave for two interviews, from nine until ten, um, then from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, then a break, if possible, then from one to two-thirty discussion, I might actually ask that we do one to three? This board discusses a lot.
Okay.
And, and just to give us, that's why I asked exactly, you know, what time, so, and that still gives Terry, you know, another half hour to leave the building if she needs to leave then, if that's possible, but...
And if necessary, if a third interview is required, we would do, it would then be like eight to nine, the next one might be nine fifteen to ten fifteen, then ten thirty to eleven thirty, so we, we'd break the, instead of a half an hour in between, we'd put fifteen minutes, just to accommodate that.
It's fine.
So, when would we have to have the special meeting, then?
Your special meeting would be one to three in the afternoon.
Okay. But then if we were going to take, that might be a discussion, but then if we wanted to take action, that has to be a business meeting.
It's a special business meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, my question is, we've always had our business meetings, um, discussion sessions have been flexible, but business meetings where we're taking votes have always been when our, um, parents and teachers can be present. So, my, if we're going to have a vote, why could we not have it at our typical time, at six?
Because this is on Monday, um, number one. Number two, once we decide who we want to hire at that moment at three oh one, Mrs. DiAgresta would begin negotiations. So, this is only to decide who we want to hire, and then, again, at three oh one, Mrs. DiAgresta would enter into negotiations until the next morning. Then, on the morning of the fourteenth, if we don't need to meet as an optional special discussion or special business meeting in the morning, then all is good, and we just resume for our regular discussion session at twelve.
And then, on the fourteenth, we vote for...
In the evening, by that time...
You would approve the contract.
Okay. Right, approve the contract.
Right, you would, you would be voting in the special meeting on the thirteenth to who the person is to enter into negotiations, and ideally, that contract would be completed. And honestly, interim contracts are not the same as long-term contracts.
Mrs. Baranborg, are you comfortable with one o'clock?
On which day?
On the thirteen.
Yes.
Okay, one o'clock for the special meeting, for the special call meeting.
Well, that's all day.
She said one to three.
Okay.
That's from eight to three.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a day off.
If there's three candidates, if there's two candidates, it's nine to three.
Okay. Question about, now I lost my choo-choo train of thought. I know it's, you said it's not a big contract, however, the person entering into the contract also needs to bring it to their attorney.
Absolutely.
So, that's why I'm sitting there thinking, okay, are we giving them enough time between Monday and Tuesday to be able to have something for us to vote on Tuesday night?
I would say, Bill, you can better speak to that.
There usually has not been any issues with, with interim contracts, once we talk about the salary. Because normally, we recommend the salary of the existing superintendent without any of the other benefits with it.
Unless there's a relocation requirement, like if you need somebody who maybe lives out of district, there would be like a housing supplement of sorts, or, or travel supplement of sorts.
And they might, you know, if they're traveling in the district or something, they would need some travel expenses and, and maybe some leave time, but that's all, there usually aren't any other benefits in it. And we would circulate those, a draft of the contract through the attorney, and the attorney can look at that, a lot of that upfront.
So, to clarify, I just heard you say that for an interim contract, there are no other benefits, so that person is essentially serving as a consultant for the time of their interim-ness.
Depending on the way it's set up, they're usually an employee, they're usually an employee.
Well, we've had some not, and some who are. If they're in, if they are your, already somebody from staff, and then they're already an employee, they are already generating leave, all of that. If they come from the outside, and we have had many who come from the outside, then there, it is typically a contractual relationship.
Okay. Oh, I just lost it, I had a follow-up question.
Because don't forget, your current superintendent, it's a contractual relationship.
Yes.
So, it's a contractual, it's just a different type of relationship.
Okay, can I review these dates to make sure I have them?
Sure.
Let's make sure we all have them.
Okay, so I'm filling in my blanks on my timeline I had here, or the timeline I put together, so... So, oh, so today's May 1st, we open, open up to receive resumes, and you will receive the resumes. Wednesday, May 8th, last...
I'm gonna say midnight, if that's okay? Midnight on May 8th?
Or 11:59 PM.
That's fine.
Last date to receive resumes, Friday, May 10th, the board meets 9, 9 to 11:30 to select the top two or three interim superintendent candidates, correct?
Recognizing that there may be one person that rises to the top, and you don't wanna interviews at all, and you may not need the other meeting.
Okay, so, um, Monday, May 13th, we enter, we interview the one to three candidates, correct? And then 1 to 3, that afternoon, we have a special meeting?
Right, so let's change where it says Tuesday, May 14th there, to Monday, May 13.
Oh, okay, mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be 1 to 3.
Okay.
Wait. Action item to vote for interim, not the contract, but the person.
And that's gonna happen on the 13th?
Mm-hmm, the 1 to 3.
Okay, and then, um, May 14th, at our tip, our, our already scheduled business meeting, we will have an action item to approve the contract.
Correct.
And then, we need to take out the May 15th and 17th, because she's already completed that task. And then...
Wait, say that last part, I'm sorry?
Where I had May 15th and 7 through 17th, where Mrs. DiAgresta was going to finalize the contract.
Got it.
Mark that out, but, and then, um, our goal is, what, Monday?
21st.
May 21st for the new interim, for the interim to start?
With a little flexibility if needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I really think this is doable, I think this is, this will work really well, plus, what I like is you've built in some extra time in case you need it before, before the end. So, I think it's definitely doable.
Okay, so...
Um, I'm sorry, may I, Madam Chair? Why not have the start date on the 20th? On Monday, I see Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what?
Yeah, it is, she's right.
It is a Monday.
We could put a tentative date on that.
It should say Monday, it says Monday, May 21st, I think it should say Monday, May 20th.
20th.
Good catch.
Sure, good catch.
Good job. So, May 20th. And, um...
Tentative start.
I have a question from Mrs. Messina. Andrea, is it, um, is it always necessary to have the interim begin while the superintendent is still in office? Or have interims often begin without the superintendent presently here?
Ideally, there would be some overlap, but that does not mean it's always the case. In fact, we've, we've had, um, we had one superintendent in Manatee who, at a school board meeting, actually resigned, walked out the door at that school board meeting, and so they had to, from the dais, appoint somebody in the audience, start serving.
Wow.
So, I mean, things happen.
Yeah. So, just...
It makes us look good.
Oh, my.
It works out, it works out better for a transition if you can do that.
You think?
If that doesn't happen.
Mrs. DiAgresta has a comment, oh, go ahead.
So, I was, um, just throwing out there a thought, for example, if the superintendent decided, though he has not requested to use his vacation days, for example, if he wanted tomorrow to submit a request to use his vacation days earlier and leave on the 20th while the super, the interim begins on the 20th, do you foresee a problem with that?
Actually, contractually, his last day's the 24th, so he is the superintendent until the 24th. So, even if he were to take sick days, he, he, he already has designated somebody in the district to act in his absence, so if for some reason he, let's say he actually got sick on the 23rd and was not there that day, even if your other person came in, they would not be acting as superintendent until he is gone. I'm sorry, your attorney could probably answer that even better than I.
As a consultant for a few days.
And that was actually the comment that I wanted to make, I, understanding, you know, the, these notes that have been put down for this timeline purposes, if we have this interim person that wants to start or can start on May 20th, they would be starting in a consulting position only in order to receive transition information from the outgoing superintendent. They would not be the interim superintendent until May 25th at 12 o'clock midnight.
Right.
Or 12 in the morning, sorry, in the morning. It's a very minor point, but we can only have one superintendent at a time. And Dr. Rendell is the superintendent until 11:59 on May 24.
Exactly. Um, Mrs. Barrenburg, and then...
So, um, do you have a rubric or a matrix that we can look at ahead of time that we'll be able to score candidates with?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay, if you could forward that to us.
We also have some questions, too, that we could forward you to, that you can use if you'd like.
Please.
Okay.
Ms. Messina, I, I know we've not, um, my thoughts today, we were gonna just see what you had to offer, but it seems like we've pretty well made, it sounds like we've made our decision to utilize FSBA through this transition and finding an interim. Can you explain what type of cost we're looking at?
Sure, I, I, that's always a concern in every district, not just the ones who have financial challenges.
You're right.
But, as members of our association, and I realize, you know, you guys had that conversation, our goal is to help our school districts through difficult times, transitions in superintendents being one of them. The, a full-on search is a completely different process in our mind, that, that requires a whole lot more time, energy, and effort. But to assist you with a search, like, not a search, excuse me, to assist you with finding an interim, they're two different things, we would look at this as part of our service to your district. I would need travel, 'cause I can't charge other districts for my mileage to get here in a hotel room, but besides that, the cost for me to come and assist on those, that day or those days, that is a part of membership in the association for an interim. When we start talking about a superintendent search, that's a different story, that's kinda why I really don't even wanna talk about that right now. Let's get you through where you are now and kinda shore you guys up, and then we can focus on other things.
Okay, Mrs. Justice?
Well, I just wanted to give Andrea perhaps the opportunity to correct herself. You said that the goal, that the purpose was to take boards through difficult times, it's not really the purpose of the FSBA.
Oh, no, you're correct, that, yes, but my, my, my point in being here with you today...
Right.
Yes.
But what would be the purpose of the FSBA?
The mission of the Florida School Boards Association is to improve student achievement through the effective school board leadership, which is kinda where this falls in, and advocacy for public education. So, we do that through all of the different types of work and services that we provide.
Thank you.
And thank you for correcting me, that's not our mission, but...
Right.
When triage is needed...
Sure.
We come in and that's what, that's part of what we do.
And, and I hear you, and I agree, I think, you know, we're not gonna talk about the full-on superintendent search at this point, and whether we're gonna use FSBA and how that will go. 'Cause right now, for the next three weeks, we're focused on this. If we do, we will eventually need to enter that conversation, is that something that you advise we do after we've completed the whole interim process? Because at some point, we have to make a decision about how we're gonna move forward.
Sure.
And how long, even in the contract, we have to make a decision about how long we want an interim for, which then necessitates a conversation about when we wanna start searching and
Sure.
what the process would look like for a permanent replacement, a permanent superintendent. So, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, first, I'd like to speak to how, how long you really think you need as, this interim to serve. Because that's gonna be, when, when people are interested in applying, they wanna know, is it three months, six months, nine months, 12 months, a year and a half? They, they wanna know that, because that will determine whether or not they have the ability to serve. And I'll ask my esteemed colleagues who have even more years of experience than I, but given the situation that your district is in at this point today, and, and you all get to make these decisions, but my recommendation is you, you, you would not want anyone for less than six months, because you need to have some stabilized, it's almost like after a hurricane, and I know you guys had hurricane effects, I think this side of the state was Francis and Jean, right, back, back all those years. So, the first thing you have to do is stabilize things to not lose any more ground, right? And so, that's what you need your interim to come in and start doing, and stabilizing some things. You guys have a budget that you need to develop, you've got school that you need to plan to get open in the fall, you've got, um, any number of other hiring that's gonna happen between, over the summer to, to get things going. So, focusing on those things in the immediate, I think, is gonna be important. So, um, I'll, I'll ask them, I would say six to 12 months makes sense, and I think is, is reasonable. I think that it does take, depending on the kinda search you wanna do, it does take, especially if you can plan for it, it does take a good six months if you're gonna include the community, and there's all these other aspects that you're gonna wanna talk about. But getting somebody in here and getting that situation stabilized for a month or two before you even start talking about, okay, now how do we move forward, I think is what's important, and I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues here.
I, I agree with Andrea, and I think one thing is really important before we start the search is, we need to look at your strategic plan, the board needs to come together on what priorities and characteristics of the new person that there are, so I think that's very reasonable. I would say after we get the, you know, then we would start looking at who we wanna do the, the search after we get the interim up and going for a while.
Whether it's us or somebody else, doesn't matter, the answer's the same. John?
No, I was just gonna piggyback on what Andrea said about your involvement in the community. If you wanna have like online surveys, you wanna have community meetings at night at different, you know, different schools in your area, in your county, to have public input, uh, those, those things, you know, they take some time, so, you know, six months would be a full six months if you were looking at trying to have somebody in place by January. So, to do a really good job of public input, really informing the public of all the steps along the way, a little, a little longer length of time would really impact that one little box of, of your search.
And by the way, I, I do wanna point out that most, especially interims who come in from the outside, I'll be very specific, if it's an internal, it's a little bit different, 'cause many times the internal might be someone who's looking to apply, okay? Most interims from the outside are not somebody who's looking to apply, and under those circumstances, typically, that person understands that part of their task is to help with a superintendent search, and help with some of the types of things that John's referencing.
And then, if I could, just one more item, you know, your, your timeframe to fill the position advertised may have some impact on what candidates you get. If you're looking to maybe fill mid-year, a January, February date, you might lose some candidates who say, I'm not gonna leave my school district in the middle of a year. You know, that, a lot of these superintendents are so dedicated to what they're doing, that transition time might be better, spring break and beyond, as opposed to, you know, a mid-year transition. So, that's just something else I kinda think about.
And, and one more contextual thing regarding that is, you guys are gonna be in sort of a good position in that you know the timeframes of some of the other districts that are looking for superintendents. So, for example, Escambia County went from an elected superintendent to an appointed superintendent, their start date is going to be like November 22nd because of the election. So, you know when they're starting. Martin is gonna be in the same boat, they're gonna be starting in November. Marion, which is Ocala, they've decided that their start date for their new superintendent, they've negotiated, it was elected to appointed, but they've negotiated a July 1 start date, their superintendent's gonna leave a little bit early. So, you guys know all those things and can map your search to, to, to try to, if you're asking me, I'd recommend you try to do it before Marion, because you want the better candidates and you want the choice. If, if you're in a position that you can do it, that's what I would recommend that you do, because you, you posture it to position yourselves in the best possible scenario to get the best candidates. That's gonna require work on your part as a board, it's gonna require work on your interim with you as a board, it's gonna require work from your community, but that's what's important for this district to move forward.
Can you expand a little bit on the work that you foresee this board needing to do to be able to attract a high-quality candidate for this position long-term?
Well, sure, I mean, I think anytime there's a transition with a superintendent, serious candidates wanna know what happened. I mean, we're not gonna pretend, and they're, they're gonna wanna know how things occurred in the district, they're gonna wanna know the climate of the district, they're gonna wanna know how well does the board work together, are they fractured? Do they have, um, commitment to a strategic plan, is everybody sharing goals? Is there support in the community for the school district, all of those things? And so, so, right now, you're in a transition phase. Candidates want to know that there's some solid things, starting with the strategic plan, and I don't know where you all are on your strategic plan, if there's community buy-in, board buy-in, staff buy-in, but those are the kinds of questions that we get before people are even willing to apply. And, and they do, superintendents now, um, the job is a very, very difficult job. It is a, in Florida especially, it is a job where there's intense scrutiny. A lot of criticism comes your way, and it's not an easy job, it's just not an easy job. And so, it, it's not as an appealing job as it might have been 10, 20 years ago, that's just the reality. So, superintendent candidates get to choose their district, in many cases, the top candidates get to choose their district. They're going to look for community support, they're going to look for, um, uh, facilities that are well-maintained. They're gonna, I mean, I can, we can tell you the kinds of questions they ask us. They're gonna look for a supportive board, they're gonna look for a supportive business community, they're gonna look for all of those things, and so, all those things ought to be the things that you spend time with your interim looking at, and part of it is going to be board cohesion. They're gonna wanna know that when they come in, they have a board that supports them and supports common goals. And so, finding those common goals and working towards those common goals are gonna be important.
I, I think Andrea's said it very well, and I, the main thing is the board working together with some specific goals, and I see that. But all of what Andrea said makes this district extremely desirable. I think when, when this is posted, either statewide or nationwide, you're gonna have some excellent candidates apply. And I think what, what we can do is help you make sure that everything is moving, everything is moving in the right direction, and every, that all the board is together on what they want, in terms of characteristics, in terms of what the goals are.
Shared goals, shared goals, shared goals.
No, I just to touch on the difficulty of the job, I conducted two searches in Seminole County for superintendent, and the one prior to Dr. Vogel, when Dr. Vogel was hired, we had something like, uh, I think it was 88 or 89 applicants, and that was probably 20 years ago. When we hired Dr. Vogel, there was like 45 to 50 applicants. And in some of the recent searches, the average number you're getting is probably gonna be 40, 45 for persons that apply, so, it, it is a difficult position, and, um, you know, folks are very selective when they do apply.
Can we get back on this topic of interim, because we have some questions that we need to get answered before? Can I, can I just explain what we need to, we need to know salary, we need to know job description? We have that job description, so do you post that somewhere? Or do we post that with your contact information? How do we go about that, getting the information out?
Normally, um, if you can send me your job description for your current superintendent job description. Now, trying to update that job description between now and when you're hiring an interim is really not an expectation, but during the interim's term, that is something you're gonna wanna spend some time looking at, just to see if you want any updates. So, if you send me the job description, then I can put that along with, you know, the, the contact information and the posting that we're seeking applicant, or resumes for an interim position. But the other piece is, if, if you make it available on your website, that's helpful. On your homepage, I don't know your IT department, but if you can just have, interested in serving as our interim superintendent, here's the job description, send a resume to Andrea Messina, I mean, it's very simple and easy, and, and it puts it out there in front of everyone, but at the very minimum, I would wanna have that. As I mentioned from the beginning, the job description for the interim is no different than the job description from the superintendent.
Okay, and then we need to...
Salary you wanted to talk about.
Right.
I'll let Bill start that conversation.
Yes. Normally, uh, for interim, we would advertise what the salary is for your current superintendent, is what we would, we would do, and I believe that's 1, 163.
Yeah, typically, I mean, the, sometimes there are, you, you might even hear from the community where they say you can save some money, don't pay them as much, they're only the interim, but the truth of the matter is, they're doing the job that the other person was doing for this amount of money. And we believe that you're paying them for the job that they're doing, and so, we strongly recommend that you maintain the salary of your current superintendent, as Bill said to... As Bill said, typically, the, the benefits are not going to be the same. They're, they're not going to be asking for retirement. They're not going to be asking for any of those sorts of things. They, they, there may be, depending on the location of the person, there may be some travel compensation. But besides that, typically, that's about the most that we would see.
And just, I have one final question and then Mrs. Rosario and Dr. Schiff. Will, I'm trying to, how does the membership with the Florida Superintendents Association, would, would Dr. Rendell's membership roll over into the interim or is that a new?
Yes, it would, it would be continued with that.
Yeah, it's a district membership.
It's a district.
Okay, district. So our new interim would have that until the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. And then they would have the access to utilize you as a consultant and?
Absolutely. We would be definitely in touch with them.
Okay. Mrs. Rosario and Dr. Schiff?
Two things. So just to clarify, so who is going to send the job description? Is Nancy going to send it or are you Laura?
Nancy, you could send that to me, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
These, actually, these are my, so I, I'd like to ask that we not just receive resume, but we also receive resume and cover letter.
If they send a cover letter, not everyone?
In our, whatever posting, please send resume and cover letter.
Okay.
That's possible wherever, even if our IT puts it on our website, you know, if you're interested. Send resume and cover letter to?
I don't really think it matters, so.
Whomever. Well, I'd like a cover letter. Cover letters say a lot about a person. Okay, the next thing, I just wanted to hopefully begin the discussion about goals, superintendent goals, if we can get there before our time is up this afternoon.
No.
Yes, our interim goals.
Oh, our?
Interim, interim.
Okay. I didn't want to talk about superintendent, but you're?
No, interim, interim. What our goals would be. So personally, I, you asked somewhere at the beginning of our meeting today that we discuss what our, what we're looking for.
Profile.
What, yes, the profile was the word that you used. I'm personally interested in someone who has had experience as either an assistant superintendent, a superintendent, or of some high executive leadership position. Someone who can build relationships, has a strong sense of building trust and building relationships and understanding that we have a lot of people in our district who, who are struggling and who are hurting. And we need, we need someone to build that trust. And my, my third thing, which is kind of like three bulleted points, I have down budget. We need someone who can really take the reins and has had experience with budget, obviously. Because budget, our budget is up and coming and it's, needs to be approved. And we do not currently have a CFO. Hopefully soon we will. But if we have a CFO named and in place by the time the interim comes in, obviously someone who can work together with the new CFO so that both of them will probably have both new positions. But I think our budget is, is probably up there for me personally with regard to experience and relationship and trust. Then the next bullet that I have on that third item is the focus on our strategic plan. So our strategic plan is in, we do have a strategic plan. It has already been established. It's a working document. There are some things on there that I personally have brought up, you know, to be reviewed. I believe that this would have been the year that leadership would be reviewing the strategic plan to see where we are and where we can fix, edit, you know, adjust, whatever the words would be for that. I don't know if the interim superintendent would take that on right away. I know there are other things that are priority, but those are some of my, my top bulleted points. And then my last is obviously opening school. You know, I, I definitely want to, I don't want us to lose impact on, you know, opening our school year with our teachers and our professional development opportunities and children starting the new school year. When the new interim comes in, students will be leaving, you know, five days later and our teachers leave that following Friday. So two weeks later, our teachers leave. So those are some of my key points that I can think of right now. I'm sure my colleagues here would have other ideas.
We need to hear them for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I appreciate you bringing that up and I think that's a bigger, that's a conversation, because I think we all have a set of things that we're interested in looking for. And so I think that's part of the discussion that we'll have moving forward. And then if, if, I'm going to call you the FSBA team is not here for those conversations, we'll make sure to get that information to you. But I think that's the conversation.
Well, she wanted us to have that today. If, if you have some thoughts, because see, don't forget, we're going to be sort of targeting some people. And if I know what your priorities are, and certainly it could be that you have different priorities than you. And so when that happens, I can try to find somebody to meet yours. I can try to find somebody to meet yours. They may or may not have time availability or interest, but they might.
Well, when we get to that part of the conversation, I think we can all express what those are. But I want to make sure, because you had said by 4:30, you want to close this part down so that we have our conversation.
Our conversation was supposed to be to go through the timeline and we've, we've already accomplished that.
Okay, so we're now moving into that part of the conversation.
Yeah.
So one, so, so I can add to that, but I also wonder if you could speak a little bit, so we are already receiving some resumes. So one thing I want to know is the process, should we just forward those to you? There are some that have, you know, if people, or just do people reapply to that, but people are starting to roll things into us?
People, okay, first off, you don't want them rolling into you.
No, I don't. So I want to, I want that publicly communicated.
Yes, so if someone has sent you a resume, you can say, thank you, please forward to Andrea, or excuse me, Messina@FSBA.org and that'll take care of it. Just send it right back to them so they send it directly to me. I don't want any impropriety of somebody saying, well, she didn't forward it, or she didn't forward it, or put it back on those people.
And so within that, some of them have come to Nancy. Is that something that we could ask Nancy to simply just send it back to them and say, please go through this channel?
Yes, please do.
Secondly, can you speak a little bit to, this issue has come up about internal and external and the wisdom of hiring somebody internally who is known to people in the district and the wisdom of hiring somebody externally who comes in afresh? Can you speak a little about your experience with that?
Well, sure. There are benefits and drawbacks to both and it all depends, number one, on your perspective and number two, where the district is in its, in its situation. So for example, we were in Hernando and they had a transition where the superintendent was leaving and they had an internal candidate that, number one, everybody could get around, which is important. And number two, that had a skill set and he was going to apply and, and had some interest. So hiring him made sense because they, they were doing things kind of quickly. He was ready, he was poised, he had experience, he could do it. And he seemed to be well-received within the district. There are times when somebody within the district might not be a good choice. And we've seen that as well, where in some cases, what, what an interim's tasked to do is to make some changes. And by making those changes, it actually sets up the full-time, you know, long-term superintendent is better able to come in and, because certain changes have already been made, and, and be successful. Sometimes the person who makes the changes ends up being a short-term superintendent. And so it, there are times when a district might want to shield the longer-term person by having a shorter-term person come in and make some, some important changes. Sometimes that happens. There are times when, no matter what, if there are internal people who want to be your superintendent, there will be jockeying. That's going to happen no matter what, even, even if it is a good choice to choose an internal. There will be jockeying and there will be community lobbying for people that they know because they know them and they trust them and they believe in them and they know the good work that they've done. That's a given, no matter what. Gentlemen, help me out here. What are your thoughts?
Thanks, Andrea. I think you're right on target.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, there will always be community pressure, one way or another. Sometimes you want a fresh perspective. Sometimes having an internal person provides a safety net for people. And some people need a safety net at certain times in a district. You guys are really going to have to decide where is your district and what does your district need? And you're going to have to come to some agreement on that, or at least majority on that. It, it, it really all depends on your perspective as a board.
If there's a strong interim candidate, you know, that certainly probably consider that person and, and review that. You know, Florida, as Andrea said earlier, is a very difficult state to be superintendent in. So that prior experience as a superintendent in Florida or a deputy superintendent or assistant superintendent certainly will be, I personally think, a benefit to somebody who's coming in with some goals that you're going to set. We need the budget set. We need our strategic plan updated. We need this. They're going to know about all that by having that previous experience. But not to say there's not the one person out there that may come from another place that you're going to land on. But experience is, is a big deal, I think.
Yes, and in some districts, there's a person that's a natural that would move right into the job because everybody says, oh yes, this person is the one right away. So it's just very hard to decide. Basically, every board has a different situation that they're dealing with.
Yeah, and some boards specifically would not, if there are two people internal, then they would specifically not choose one of either of the two, simply because they want to try to keep things fair and above reproach.
Mrs. Berenberg had a question or comment?
Sure, I, I agree with you. I think that we need somebody with experience and upper-level management in the school district. I also think that we need somebody that's going to build trust and relationships, most importantly. I think that's, that's key for us. I think that our, our community needs that. I think our schools need that. I think we need that. So that to me is a key factor in our search. I also think this person needs to not babysit the school district. They need to move us forward. They need to give every student next year the same opportunity that every student had in previous years of having a leader that's going to move us in, in the best direction that they can perceive to, to lead us in. And I think that if, you know, my passion is to have somebody that's passionate and wants to do this because they're passionate and not because they're, you know, they're available and they have nothing to do and they want to just come in. I really feel like we need somebody that cares about us, that wants to move us forward and wants to, above all else, bring us together as a team.
Mrs. Justice, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Dr. Schiff?
I'll come back and I'll echo some of what my colleagues have said, but I want to add a few other things. If I were going to say three priorities, and these are not to the exclusion of others, but these are the things that, for me right now, I first and foremost think somebody attentive to culture and climate, somebody attentive to, as has been mentioned, building relationships, healing relationships, but making everybody who works in and participates in this district feel like they have a voice and like they're valued. And I want somebody who's got a track record on that. That's hugely important. Secondly, an issue that we've been dealing with for a very long time have been equity issues. We've been under a DSEG order for decades. It's critically important to me that somebody comes in who has sensitivity and awareness and experience on improving equity issues in a district. Hugely important to me. Thirdly is academic achievement. We've seen our academic achievement kind of go, not improve at the rates that we would like to see it improve, given the resources and capacity of the district. And I would really love to see somebody who has a proven track record in things that they've implemented in schools to improve academic achievement. We're in a tricky time right now with changes in the legislature and in priorities and how that's going to go. But I would say those, those would be my three priorities at the moment, though not to the exclusion of others.
I agree. I think what other board members have mentioned, but something that I really feel strongly about is having someone that has the experience of being a district leader and having the ability, not only being a district leader, but I think it's important to also know how to work with the dynamics of a board. That's a different set of skill set versus just being a leader in a district. But that's something, you know, at the end of the day, I'll, I'll have to look at and weigh, weigh the overall person. But secondly, I feel like that the other person, the interim needs to really have a strong understanding of budget and finance and overall operations for the district to be able to set the, the, the new superintendent up on the right path. Because I don't, I, I feel like there's some areas that need addressed and, and it's my concern that during this time period that it could, it could go in a negative way that we don't want it to go. And then also absolutely academics. And that plays part in with being able to manage a good budget, you're able to put more money into your academics. So academics is important to me. So those, and I echo what, what everyone else said. Do you want to?
Sure, I'll share something now, thank you. I think that as we come into the budget building season, that having someone that has experience as a superintendent in the budget building process is key. I agree with Mrs. Berenberg in the comment that she doesn't want someone to babysit. I believe that as we go through this budget building process, there are going to be some decisions that are going to be, need to be made and we need someone strong enough to be able to do that. We are in, we are currently at impasse with our teachers' union and bargaining with both CWA and IRC. I also agree about what Mrs. Ork had shared about setting a superintendent up for success, a future leader for success. I think that the decisions that the interim is going to make, having had experience as a superintendent, are going to be very important to set up the, the next person for success. And that is really the goal here. If we're looking at six months, we're looking at that taking us into November. So you think about what happens, the budget, opening school up. As far as academics are concerned, academics are always going to be a huge issue that we need to focus on and everything we do should be directed at making sure that instruction in the classroom is, is the finest that it can be. A lot of times with the budget, you kind of spell out your priorities as to how you're going to make that happen. So someone with an experience, not executive leadership experience, not assistant superintendent experience in curriculum instruction or in technology or in, you know, just in finance alone, but overall district school superintendent experience is going to be something that I'm really looking for.
One thing that you talked about was when a superintendent's looking at us, all those factors that they were looking at, is one thing that's kind of unique here is the community support that we have. We have a couple of different, lots of different groups that help us in educating kids. And so we are truly a village that is raising our kids. And I, I would encourage whoever it is that we're looking at, you know, do their homework, but also know that you're going to have to build those relationships too and be a bridge for like the Gifford Youth Activity Center and for MCAN, which is our Moonshot Moment Community. So I think we've got some really great supports out there that they need to be aware of and they also need to be cognizant of, that that's a relationship they need to build as well.
I know you've passed your millage. You do have some additional voted millage.
Two years, six years ago.
Yeah, you passed that. So I think that's really a plus too and that really demonstrates the community support. Was it a half-mill? Half-mill? So that's something that's really important. I see a, a strong consensus among board members on what priorities are just right here, just by looking at this. This is really helpful. And what, what we can do is, we can craft some questions based on what I'm hearing right here for you to consider when you, when you're doing your discussions with them. right here, for you to consider when you, when you're doing your discussions with them. That's one thing we can do, Randy.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was also thinking what Mrs. Berenberg was thinking about. This is not only us interviewing somebody, but this is somebody interviewing us.
Absolutely.
And so in the process, I have to admit, an hour feels really short to me for, for a decision. Granted, it's an interim, but it's a huge decision. It's, it's gonna be the next at minimum, which we also have to discuss, you know, six months to a year. We haven't finalized how long we're looking for somebody for. But I'm wondering in, in that interview, there's five of us, there's sets of questions, and then there are probably questions that they wanna ask of us. In your experience, can all that be done in an hour interview?
The type of people that would typically be applying for this, and they wouldn't even be applying normally, that are considered to be willing to help you guys, those are people who are pretty well-known. I mean, Bill's a good example. Bill has actually served as an interim in Manatee before. And Bill's long-term service in the state of Florida is not difficult to find or learn about or hear about. So interviewing Bill, you already know, before he walks in the door, before you even meet him, you're gonna have an idea of who these people are. My guess is they're gonna have watched some board meetings and they're gonna know who you guys are. So, yes, it can be done. I do want to, I feel as though I have to say, the same thing that I say to people when they're looking for their permanent superintendent, there is no Superman or Superwoman. And for an interim, part of the formula for an interim is availability and willingness. So there may be some things that you're all looking for that you might have to, to, to be able to get the relationship piece, you might have to give a little on the...
Some other piece.
Yeah, some other piece, whichever one. I'm sorry, I should put my glasses on. I'm trying to read and I can't even read. But you're going to have to look at who's available at the time, that's willing to consider coming here and kinda typically that means they're gonna be, unless it's an internal person, they're gonna be away from their family for long periods of time. We've never had a bad experience with an interim because the people who are doing it are passionate people by and large, or else they wouldn't even be...
They would be doing.
That's right. They, they see these opportunities as, number one, that's a challenge in a school district and I think I can help. Number two, you know, I, I care about public education and I don't wanna see this district lose, lose any ground. And so their desire is to come and to help, but, so your, your question is, is an hour long enough? You can, you can certainly spend three hours with people or one hour. I don't know that you'd get any more or less.
Mrs. Rosario, and then I want to end this with, we need to talk about timeline, what's a realistic timeline that we're looking at for the interim, and then anything else that you feel that we need to cover before.
Okay.
Okay?
Something that Andrea shared with me when we met privately before today was, which might actually answer your question, Dr. Schiff, or, or concern, was that it is possible that we can call candidates prior to the formal interview. And we can talk with them on the phone. We could even call board members from their prior positions and talk with their, you know, prior board members if they're still serving and, you know. So I think that if we do our part and our homework prior to the interview, we're not going into the interview blindly. So that might be something to help Dr. Schiff in, in, you know, preparing for that so that we actually can craft our questions differently too, once we have those conversations.
Yes, and I do, I do caution you, however, to be very, very careful in those conversations. What you do not want is anyone to be able to misinterpret a phone call as an offer.
Right.
You just, you, you need to be very, very careful and just ask a few questions related to the job. Can you tell me about a time when...
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah. Can you tell me about a time when, look forward to seeing the resume? Boom. Not even seeing you because that might hint that, hint that there's an interview definite.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah.
So just be very, very, very cautious in the words that you say. You're gonna wanna talk to your attorney to get final confirmation of stuff, because I can see her face already being concerned. Talking to the board members, absolutely fair game. Talking to the candidates, caution, caution, caution.
If I may, the, the last time this board went out in, for superintendent search, I actually prepared cautionary tales of, of when you do speak to people and questions to avoid and questions never to ask, those sorts of things. I, I circulated it a while ago when I, I thought the board was gonna be involved with the CFO interviews, but I, I will freshen it up and send it back out again. I think it's important to remember that even though you're a school board, you're interviewing and we want to be cautious of all those federal laws out there that prohibit what we can ask with regard to employment interviews, so.
Thank you. I have one last part.
Mm-hmm.
Please.
With, with regard to the timeline that you're suggesting, Madam Chair, I'm not sure exactly where you're going, where you said you wanted to bring us back to that. But what I would ask for board members is to consider, and we don't need to vote on this, from what I understand, a directive is not necessarily, we don't need a vote if we wanna direct our superintendent to do something. We can choose to do that by consensus, I believe. I would really like to see our superintendent currently begin and work on a full transitional plan, something to provide to us on our discussion session on the 14th. I'm willing to give up one of my discussion sessions on that day to give him that time to, you know, present it to us. But I think it's important for us to see that plan before the superintendent actually passes that on to the interim.
Have you seen that before?
Not necessarily for an interim. Have you?
I, I think I'm hearing, this is, you're saying your current superintendent, you'd like your current superintendent to...
To create a transitional plan.
Normally, what happens in a transition is the superintendent leaves a list of items that, that are, that are pending, so the board and everybody is aware of that. I know when I, when I retired, the board did an exit interview with me to, to try to find out, and, and so what I did is prepare a list of where we were on all of key areas.
Right, that's exactly what I'm...
Right, and that would be up to the board to do, if you want the new super, you know, the current superintendent to do that. And then I know that, when, when we had a really smooth transition in my situation, and so I knew exactly where to start on day one.
That's exactly right.
Right.
You know, that would be a board decision with your current superintendent.
I don't necessarily see that as him having to meet with us. I think he could put that in writing and then email that to us or...
Still have to direct him to do it.
Well, we could ask him to do that on the 14th, to have it done.
Yeah, that'd be up to how he would be wanting to do it.
I'm still so confused, I'd just like to say, may I say something? I'm just still so confused why you would wanna transition plan from a superintendent that you no longer have confidence in having serve. So I'm just, I, I'm just a little confused about that. I can see in the case of someone retiring perhaps, that that would be something that would make sense. I don't, I, I would imagine that Dr. Rendell wouldn't have a problem in providing information, but again, we come into this situation where it, it, it just doesn't...
So, so maybe I could offer, what I also heard you say, I, I think we've hit a number of these sort of challenging moments when we're asking an outgoing superintendent to provide information, which puts him in an awkward position and us in an awkward position. What I did hear you say, though, that might alleviate some of it, is, is the idea of exit interviews. And maybe some of our time on the 14th and our discussion could be spent creating that process, creating that process where we might ask any questions we have, finalize any issues, relationships, and acknowledge his service and, and get ready to move forward. I, I think perhaps that might be a way we could do that collectively, in a way that is respectful.
But, you know, does that, I, I don't know why I'm asking you.
Yeah.
You've just been through this more times than, than I have, yeah, so.
But, but I wanna keep the, the process really respectful and dignified and compassionate. This is a tough moment.
But asking for a plan is not undignified. It's helping our interim pick up where...
Correct. And in the circumstances in which our relationship with our current superintendent is being terminated, I think we wanna do that...
He's not being terminated.
I, I actually probably don't wanna, yes, he is resigning and that was through a process that happened where it was clear that we were not gonna renew the contract. We had already discussed that.
Yeah, but we're not terminating.
So in the process of how we move this forward in a way that leaves us in good shape and him in good shape and leaves us respectfully moving forward, I might suggest that we do that as part of our discussion and put that on the agenda as a way to acknowledge his service, get our questions asked, and figure out how we're gonna move on.
Okay, just to clarify real quick. So you want to put on our discussion session on the 14th, you want to have, have this then, not at the board meeting on the 14th, correct?
Yes. An, an, an exit interview. If there are questions we have, if there are things that he needs to present to us, if there are ways we wanna make sure that we are as knowledgeable as possible moving forward, I think a discussion session would be a good time to do that.
Right, and, and an exit interview is definitely different than a transition plan. Exit interview is, what do you, what do we need to look out for, what, what's coming up versus, you know, how he would handle the situation. So I think maybe, is that what you meant, was an exit?
No, I meant a transitional plan.
Okay.
I think, I think what we're talking about is, you're mentioning his conversation with us like a state-of-the-union to the board. And I think what you're mentioning is what, what has to be done by the next superintendent in order to move forward. I think that conversation...
No, not what has to be done, more like this, I'm in the middle of this project, you know.
Right, right. What has to be done? What has to go forward? So, so basically, that's running the district, that's day-to-day operations. That would be between the interim superintendent and the superintendent.
Right.
I think what we need is a state-of-the-union, just overall, you know, what is it that's happening? For example, strategic plan. What part of the strategic plan should we be focusing on first and that sort of thing? That's what I would like to see. I don't think, I wanna get into the specific day-to-day operations of the school district. I don't think that's our, our role. I think our role is more finding out and being respectful, I agree with you, finding out more about what it is that the next person has to move us forward to do and what is, as a board, we need to know in order to make sure that that person is moving us forward.
Okay, and then we need to wrap, wrap this up.
Okay, last clarifying. In your experience with transitional plans, do you find transitional plans disrespectful or do you find them helpful?
I mean, that's, typically, they would be helpful. Did you, I mean...
Yeah, I thought it was helpful. It was helpful for me, I know.
Just more or less being kind of a, not at the superintendent level, but a functioning level in a school district where we've had, you know, great superintendents and, you know, after 15 years for each one or 12 for each one, they're now retiring and leaving. That basically was more or less, at this point, you know, as I'm retiring, we have the major emphasis going on a capital plan to build this high school that can't be dropped. We're looking at, we're halfway through rezoning. That is a big issue that needs to be. So I think it's kind of major functions that even though certain staff from the district may be involved in and in control of and even moving forward, it's just, it was good for us to kind of, as, as a support group, as a superintendent's executive team, to say, okay, he's identified my big project, so I feel like I still am gonna get the support of the board as a person who was, you know, working on, you know, a, a huge recruitment and retention plan that that would, would be carried forward because he made emphasis that, you know, identified to the board. Rezoning was a big issue at one point. So, you know, I think major issues that are left, that are somewhere in a process of being completed, if, if an initiative has not started yet, there's really no need to bring that up. But if we've, we've got six or seven major issues going on, it's kind of a status report of we're at this point or that point.
And, and, and you're suggesting that this was something that was brought to the board as well as to the new interim?
Well, it was, it was presented to the board. Now, in transition, when Dr. Vogel came in to meet, you know, there was what, maybe a month transition that Dr. Vogel had with the outgoing superintendent, you know, they, I wasn't privy to that level of their discussions, but I'm sure it was discussed, you know, he, he could speak better to that.
Mrs. Justice, and then I, we need to...
Sure. While I recognize that Dr. Rendell will no longer serve as our superintendent, he certainly will remain as a community member, living in our community, and his daughter is a student at one of our high schools. I have every confidence that he will do his best job to make sure that our interim has the information that they need to have to ensure that the school district continues operating as, as well as possible, as he is so invested here in Indian River County.
Okay. Mrs. Esplin, do you, Mrs. DeGresta has the timeline, if you have any questions on that. So I'm, I'm gonna let you guys wrap this up.
We have not, we've not decided a timeline for the superintendent that would go into any, for an assistant superintendent that would go into any contract. Do we need to decide that now if we're asking for three months, six months, nine months, a year? Wouldn't that have to be clarified in a contract?
It, it would have to be clarified, or no more than a year, up, you know...
So we could write it as no more than and it...
Right, and either side could terminate the agreement within 30 days' notice or something. You know, that could be all added in there too.
I would imagine that we would say no, no shorter time than six months, but no longer than a year.
Yeah.
I feel like that's reasonable and if there's some flexibility within that, I think that would be helpful. But I think a commitment of at least six months would be appropriate.
I think that's, that's fair and I think that that's a reasonable expectation.
I think the last two interim contracts, I think, I believe that's, that's in there. I, and I'll just, I can send Mrs. DeGresta the...
The one that we were on.
I just got one sent to me right now, so I'll send that over to you.
I'm gonna let you wrap this up.
Okay, so it looks like Fri-, next Friday, so a little over a week, I will plan to be here as part of the presentation of the, the resumes and the conversation that you're going to have. As the applications come in, I will send them directly to Ms. Esplin, who will then be responsible for getting them out to you all. I'm gonna assume, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm going to assume that Saturday and Sunday you don't work. So any that come to me over the weekend, you could expect on, on Monday. We will get on our website an announcement, you know, advertising for the interim position and with the job description that she gives me. John, if, if, if he could work with you, Nancy, to put him in touch with who your IT person is so we could just try to get the same thing on your home website, that would be very, very helpful. And I think as a, as an important reminder, anybody that's already sent you a resume or is interested or in some way indicated to you, direct them back directly to us. That way it takes you guys out of it completely. If somebody has sent you a resume, please don't say anything like, please send this to Andrea and I hope to see you in the finalist interviews. Just don't say anything like that. Just thank you, you're gonna need to send this directly to the Florida School Board Association, missina@fsba.org. That's all you need to say. Other than that, as, as Bill said, this is doable, it's aggressive, but it's doable as long as you all are committed and as long as hopefully we get some applications and people who are willing to, to work with you. I know that we have some people who are willing to work with you. And I'm excited to help you guys and...
Thank you very much.
Work with you guys.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you all for making the time and, and doing whatever it took to be here today. Thank you.
I think that's it. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 4:59 and then we have a meeting upstairs at 5:00.